Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Harlingen City Commission meeting. The time is now 5:35 PM. We'll call this meeting to order. It has been posted as required by state law. We have a full quorum as all of the commission is present. I'll ask for everyone to please rise as Commissioner Morales leads us in our invocation.
Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen. Eternal Father, we humbly offer thee our poor presence and that of the whole of humanity, from the beginning to the end of the world, at all the masses that ever have or ever will be prayed. We offer thee all the pains, sufferings, prayers, sacrifices, joys, and relaxations of our lives, in union with those of our dear Lord Jesus here on earth. May the most precious blood of Christ, all his blood in wounds and agony, save us through the sorrowful and immaculate heart of Mary. Amen.
Now the pledge.
Let's lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberative, and just as a whole.
Mark?
Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a commission member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion nor vote on the agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
None.
None.
No.
None.
None.
Item three, announcements. With respect to items not listed elsewhere on this agenda, the city commission may report on items of community interest, including announcing community events, announcing employee or community recognitions. Item 3A, Mayor's Announcements. Mayor, do you have anything to announce?
I do. We have a pet of the week, and so I'll ask if staff can come and introduce us to our pet of the week. Is it pet of the week or pet of the...
Pet of the month.
Pet of the month.
The two weeks?
Okay.
So, we have Beethoven with us tonight. Beethoven is a five-month-old. We really think he's just a Heinz 57 mix. He's an amazing little puppy. He's fully vaccinated. He's already been neutered. He is still currently learning how to walk on a leash. As with most puppies, training is involved, so he's still in that learning process. But he is a snuggle bug. He just loves people. He gets along with other animals. He's just an amazing little dog. We do expect him to be at least a medium to a large dog. So anybody with a fenced-in yard or that is very active, you know, who's interested in him, we would love to welcome them to the Harlingen Animal Shelter. We are open seven days a week, from 1 to 6. But this... He's trying to get away right now. He's a little nervous, but it's little Beethoven.
Wonderful. And so if you gave us the hours, what is the location for those that are watching at home?
The location is at 1106 Markowski. And if anybody would like to call, they do have a large number of animals there. So if anybody would like to call and ask any questions, they're welcome to call at
Awesome. And it looks like Beethoven really likes snuggles.
He really is a snuggle bug, so he's a super sweet little puppy. So anybody interested in him or any of the other animals is welcome to stop by the shelter or call and ask questions.
All right. Alexis, you need another addition to the family? Thank you, ladies. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And that's all I have, Ms. Melinda.
Item 3B, City Manager's Announcements. Mr. Gonzalez, do you have anything to announce?
Yes. The only thing I have is that City Hall and all the city departments will be closed on Labor Day, Monday, September 2nd. That's all I have.
Item 3C, City Commission Member Announcements. Commissioners, do you have anything to announce?
I have nothing. I want to congratulate Harlingen's Park and Rec, Thuesalud, and Josiah Moreno for hosting the first annual, the inaugural pickleball paddle battle. It was fantastic event. I hope you guys had a chance to make it out there. It was really full. We had players from throughout the region. Saw criminal defense attorney. I was like, all right, great. If someone dies, we got someone here to defend, right? But it was fantastic. And Parks and Rec, you guys did a phenomenal job. And then the other organization is the Harlingen Youth Sports Football League. I know in the past, we've talked about wanting to make Harlingen a tournament city again, just like when we were kids with... I remember going to a Royals soccer at Victor Park. Javier, you've been doing a fantastic job. I went out to Vestal. They had three different organizations out there. Harlingen's teams did very well, and the park looked fantastic. So Javier, thank you so much, and congratulations to the Harlingen Youth Sports Football League.
Awesome. I didn't make it to the pickleball because I didn't want to make everybody look bad. Just saying. Commissioner?
Yes. Jamie Garcia, are you here? Please come to the podium. Jamie and I had an eventful Monday. He's an animal control person. And, you know, yeah, they go pick up dogs. They go pick up cats, raccoons, possums, whatever. Okay, right. Monday, I'm glad my wife was not attacked, but two pit bulls ripped up one of my cats in the front yard. And it turns out, they killed seven cats across the street. I dialed nine... Silly me. My wife was trying to save the cat, and I kicked a pit bull in the ribs. And I lived to tell about it, too. Jaime came, and the dogs were gone. And a bit, the dogs came back looking for the hole in the fence that they came through. He has a hook and a noose, and he captured the thoroughbred, the pure pit bull, threw it in the cage in the back of the truck, and then the tan one, that's partial pit bull, he got that one, put it in the truck. But before doing that, he had to call for police backup. The dogs were in people's front yards, and he can't go into people's front yards. And I just, I'm emotionally involved here. We had a rough night's sleep Monday. But I just want to say sincere thank you and great appreciation, and I have some sort of proclamation. If you can come up here, we'll take a picture. You're my hero.
And if the commission could join, Commissioner Mike.
So this is a proclamation, a recognition to Jamie Garcia. This is in recognition of your outstanding bravery, hard work, and way of great dedication as your role as an animal control officer. Your exceptional response to a call involving the vicious animal demonstrates not only your courage, but your commitment to the safety and well-being of our community. Your actions serve as an inspiring example of the positive work done by animal control officers, and we're deeply grateful for you for your continued service, your dedication, and bravery are truly commendable. And Mayor, Monsupulveda, signed this. And once again. There you go. Hold down. We're gonna take a picture.
And so for those that are wondering, Mike, this animal got out of someone's yard. Isn't that correct?
The two pit bulls, yeah. They ripped through somebody's fence and through another fence.
Yeah, so awesome work. Thank you to the whole department and for HPD for having the support and the backup. Commissioner?
None.
All right. Okay.
Moving on to item four, proclamation presentation of awards. Item 4A, presentation of recognition to the RGV rollers.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us. Our first award and recognition is going to RGV Roller, and it is to recognize their outstanding organization, and they've made a significant impact on our community. This summer, they volunteered their time and resources to bring unique and engaging experience to Harlingen Parks and Recreation Summer Playground Program. And we are honored to recognize them, not just for their volunteer services, but for their passion for promoting health and wellness among our youth. So at this point in time, I would love to invite a member of the RGV Roller to come and tell you a little bit more about their organization.
My name is Leo Corlebe. I'm a board member of RGV Roller. We have JP and Nate as well. RGV Roller is a nonprofit that tries to provide kids and adults with an additional option for physical engagement activity through the sport of hockey. We want to thank you for inviting us, of course, and for the award. Very much appreciate the recognition. Thank you also to Harlingen in general for being welcoming of our programming. We've been having events here actually for over a year, including the Summer Long Program with Parks and Rec. So thank you for that opportunity. That said, there is so much more that we can do, and there's so much more growth to be had. So we look forward to growing our footprint in Harlingen, and we're exploring options for a permanent and a consistent place to play. You might not think of hockey when you think of the Valley, but Harlingen specifically has a long history of roller hockey, and we just want to bring some of that back. Please don't hesitate to reach out with any ideas, suggestions, anything at all. Any one of us would love to talk to you individually, collectively, tell you all about us, see if there's what we can do to grow the sport here. Thank you.
Awesome. So is Jessica Wagner here today? Or no? Okay. Well, she had reached out initially, wanting to recognize you and giving us the background and all of the wonderful opportunities that you're providing to the community. So, you know, tell her, thank, you know, thank her also for just putting us and connecting us together to be able to do this. It's wonderful. I noticed that lots of people in the community don't know what's out there and what's available, and so this is a great way to showcase that. So thank you for what you do. If I can get the commission to join, we'd like to take a photo with y'all. So we have here for this wonderful organization, a recognition award. The city of Harlingen congratulates and proudly presents this award to the RGV Roller's board members, Daniel Amata, Juan Pablo Lopez, Leva Alas, Lilianity Corlebe, and Alejandro Chapa. I missed that one. And Edward Bianirema. We are truly grateful for your dedication and bothering your time for our youth, and this is presented on this day, on the birthday of August 24th, in the community, if you can. Ready? One, two, and three. One, one, two, and three. All right. Moving right along.
Item 4B, Mayor's Business of the Month, Bicycle World, RGV.
So as you know, Mayor's Business of the Month has been happening since September of 23 last year, and we love being able to tell you about local businesses every month. So before I invite the owner up here to share more about his business, we have prepared a video for you.
recently in Corpus Christi, about six, seven years ago at this point. We specialize in quite a few things here. Obviously, selling bikes. We have all kinds of range of bikes for all the different types of sports that you'd want to do, whether it's road cycling, mountain biking. We sell trikes, you know, for those that may not be able to ride a two-wheeled bike, kids' bikes. We also specialize in servicing these bikes as well. So you can come in, you don't need to make an appointment, just come in, you drop the bike off, write you up a ticket, and depending on like, you know, what the issue is, we'll call you, what the estimate, we'll do some of the repairs on the bike for you. We also specialize in putting on events. We're extremely active in the community. All proceeds from any event we go to go back into the community. We're always trying to give back to the community because, you know, the city of Harlingen and just the Valley in general has been extremely good to us. We're extremely blessed. I would recommend absolutely coming in. Don't need to make an appointment for that either. Our staff are super knowledgeable, they're super friendly and warm and welcoming. We'll go and ask you a bunch of questions, see what are you wanting to do with it? I mean, like, is this something you want to do maybe once a week for an hour? Are you looking to be an enthusiast? And so kind of from there, then we'll go and look around, like, now let's go look at budget or the style of the bike. And so we'll let you actually test ride the bikes in the parking lot, so you can kind of get an idea, you know, about something you like. And then we even have test bikes, so we can go and loan you something that's a little sportier. If you're like, hey, I don't know if I want to jump into something like this, but I don't know how to tell. I don't want to go and make a large investment on something that I like it. Well, hey, go take this mountain bike out, you know, go and take it to our trail system. You can join us in one of our Saturday group rides, and we'll just always have a way to accommodate you if you're looking for, you know, something specific. I just want to say, thank the city of Harlingen. Yeah, thank you guys for this opportunity. This is really special for, you know, me and my family. Like, I know my dad, he passed away a few years ago. He would totally be, you know, absolutely stoked for, you know, to be able to have had this honor to be, you know, Business of the Month. So we really appreciate that. And like, city of Harlingen, it's been really great to us, so thank you.
Tracy, if you'd like to come up and say a few words.
Sorry, a little emotional every time. I bring up my dad, with something like this, it gets kind of hard. But yeah, Mayor Sepulveda, City Commissioners, Gabe, Javier, thank you all so much for this opportunity. This is absolutely a big blessing for us. Never would have thought something like this could happen. So we're between, you know, the Bicycle World family, my mom, my brother, we're absolutely over the moon for being awarded, you know, such a prestigious honor. Forty-seven years ago, my dad, an immigrant from the Bahamas, and my mom, a Harlingen native, formed Bicycle World about two blocks down the street from here. And for 47 years, we've been super active in the community. We love the city of Harlingen, we love the Valley. You know, we're not going anywhere. We're absolutely enthralled to do this, and we're going to continue to put back into the community here and serve Harlingen, the Valley, as best we can. So thank you all for such a prestigious honor, and looking forward to working with you all for putting on more events and just making the city of Harlingen a better place. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Tracy, I just want to say that you are definitely like the American dream and being able to expand into other parts of the Valley. I didn't even know you were in Corpus, so that's fantastic. And I will say it is true, anytime you walk in, everybody is nice and friendly. It's almost like a little party, and everybody's having a good time. And what other people might not know is all the volunteer work that you do on your own time, organizing and helping on the trails and cleaning up and actually helping our Parks Department. And there's a whole community that takes advantage of our trails, and you provide just that sense of community within that group to get together and maybe barbecue or, you know, get together and just hang out and clean our, and clean up our trails, which is amazing, is something that you don't have to do, but it makes it an opportunity just to get together and have a good time and give back to the community and to help support the trails that you guys just, I don't know how you do it. It's not for everyone, I will say, but the trails have gotten really challenging, and thanks to Javier and his staff and to all of the volunteers, and I think it's Borba and all of those groups and all of the, you know, just hanging out and putting those rides out for folks to enjoy on the weekends also. It just does, it just means a lot. And from the commission, we just want to thank you for all your service to the community, and we're looking forward to the future of Bicycle World. I'm sure there's going to be even more expansions. So if the commission will join me, we'd love to give you your award.
Thank you.
So our next recognition is going to the Charter Review members and their dedication and service to our city. And so to tell you a little bit more about what they do, I will invite a member up here to say a few words.
I don't know.
And which member will that be? I think that's you, Don. Is there anyone else here today from the Charter Review Committee?
I think I'm the only one.
Well, let us...
So I get all the glory and all the blame.
I saw Liz at a meeting this morning, and she said she was going to be here. I don't know what happened to her.
Yeah. What did we spend, six weeks?
We had a total of eight meetings, so probably about eight weeks.
And we went from A to Z on the charter. We looked at everything, every amendment, and discussed all the amendments, and it was very intensive and lots of good discussions. And I learned a lot. I think everybody learned a lot in this exercise. So I appreciate the opportunity to be a part of it, and I know everyone on the committee does. So thank you very much, and I hope our amendments pass, and we do get this during the election.
Well, thank you for your service and to everyone that, you know, obviously couldn't be here today and that may be watching from home. We do appreciate you taking the time out. I think, you know, everybody has their lives, and to be able to dedicate, I think it was once a week or whatever it is.
Sometimes twice.
Right. And so that means a lot, and getting different perspectives from different folks on the committee. I have a lot of respect for the work that y'all did, so thank you so much for your service. I know we have a certificate for you, and I guess the others will be mailed?
Yes, we can do that.
Will it be mailed? Okay. So thank you so much.
All right. Thank you.
Don't leave. We're gonna...
We're gonna take a photo with you.
I'm it.
Yes, yes. But, Calista, will you recognize, state the other names? And, but we can, we can, yeah. But just don't go anywhere, Don.
So our members are Delia Avia, Carly Burns Thomas, Melinda Weaver, Don Ray Leonard, Liz Chavez, Victor Lial, and Michael Garza. And we have a certificate for each one of you.
We find ears again.
At this time, the public is invited to address the city commission and speak on any matter not specifically listed for public hearing elsewhere in this agenda. Please note that the city commission members may not respond to comments or deliberate on topics addressed. Mayor, we did have four citizens sign up for citizen communication. First up is Mr. Manuel Bernal. You have three minutes, sir.
Hi, and good evening to everyone. This is my first time witnessing one of these meetings, and it's actually fantastic. I really appreciate everyone's involvement and recognition of the community. So I'll be brief, Mayor Sepulveda and Commissioners. My name is Manuel Bernal. I've been a resident of Harlingen for eight years. I used to be a sales director for a company named United Healthcare, a large insurance company in this area. I recently opened up my own insurance agency, Gulf Coast Insurance. We reside here out of the Harlingen area. And really, what, the reason I'm here is because I went downstairs looking for some direction, and they said, that's a lot of questions and they're pretty loaded, so you probably should go to this commission meeting. And so here I am. Ultimately, what I want to go ahead and bring to the Commissioners and to yourself, Mayor, is I focus on a certain line of business that deals with a lot of our community that is very vulnerable. I deal with seniors primarily. And what I would like to propose, and again, this can be something that someone can guide me later, but what I would like to propose are several things throughout the year that are going to help our seniors be able to not only make informed decisions on the types of insurances that are presented to them, but also educate their loved ones on how they can better assist their parents with regards to the different services that are available that are legitimate, first and foremost, because there's a lot of concern of fraud, and secondly, that are extremely beneficial and in many instances, at zero cost to the member. Doesn't mean it's free, just means it's not no cost to the member. And so I'd like to propose a couple of things that we can go ahead and speak at a later time. First and foremost, places forums where the public can come and speak to licensed agents and have Q and A questions with regards to the types of products that are available to them, the types of services, who are the companies that provide them. And secondly, provide opportunities throughout the year where, again, said community can go ahead and be engaged with the various different types of organizations that are in the Rogan Valley, not only insurance agencies that are here, but there's a lot of other organizations that are in the Rogan Valley that are tied to insurance, clinic systems, hospitals, different types of organizations in the government, local government, that utilize certain benefits that in turn are accessible to people with certain insurances. And so that is the purpose for me being here. I want, I would like to, like I said, thank you all again for these phenomenal, for this phenomenal engagement. I really think that this actually makes me want to come back and just be more of a part of what Harlingen is bringing to the citizenship. And anyone that's watching, you guys should really come out here. This is great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bernal. If you can give your contact information to Oscar, and we'll see if we can, we can get in contact with you. I was looking on your, on your sheet, and it does, it only has your address. Thank you, and welcome.
Next, we have Mr. Raymond Reyes.
No, I didn't see him.
Mr. Reyes?
We'll come back to him at the end. I don't see him here.
Moving on to Mr. Herman Montemayor. Herman Montemayor?
Hi. I'm Herman Montemayor. We've talked in the past meeting. I had one question that's been brought to my attention on... been brought to my attention on the city manager. Is it possible that the plot can be overturned at a later time after it's been approved by the Commissions?
I can't respond to your comment, but if you want to meet after the meeting or if Javier Cervantes is here, he can talk to you about that. Oh, he's in the back. Would you raise your hand Javier so he can, that gentleman that's raising his hand right now?
Right.
If you could talk to him, he can answer your question. Because I can't answer it right now.
It's only because we're not allowed to. The rules are just really, they don't, the public comment doesn't allow for us to engage in a back and forth. But Javier can definitely assist you. And if you, if you want to stick around, I'm happy to chat with you too. But I don't know how long our meeting is going to.
Okay. Well, I'll get back to you. This is a question that was brought to my attention to ask the city manager.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to make a distinction between a public comment and a public hearing?
Yes. And so, for those, and I know we have a couple of newcomers, so Mr. Bernal and also, you're always welcome, Mr. Montemayor. I understand your question and I want to answer, we just can't. But Commissioner Lopez made a good point. We have, the last time you were here, you spoke in public hearing and a public hearing on a specific agenda item has been posted. And so, it's given notice to the public that that public hearing is going to be on the agenda. And that's the purpose for the engagement. But in public comment, those are just, you know, questions that are directed to the dais and then we can, we can have city staff follow up. And that's kind of the difference. It's not on the agenda is why we can't respond. But we can definitely answer those questions, just not collectively, but I know Javier can. And maybe we can take a moment and if you want to talk, if you're going to stick around for a little while, maybe we can take a little break. Okay? Thank you, sir.
Okay, we have Mr. Robert Lefwitch.
Robert Lefwitch, District Three. I just wanted to talk about the notice of public hearing on tax increase that you guys are going to vote to post. I'd like to remind you all that when it says on tax increase, that's because the state law says if you raise the levy amount a dollar over the previous year, it's a tax increase. I know you guys have a habit of saying, well, the headline is we lowered the rate. Well, you can't make this stuff up, but I'm looking at this proposed tax increase that you guys have. And now it's a 10% property tax increase, $2,536,279. That's the largest tax increase in the history of Harlingen. And if you go back from when the majority of this mayor and commission have gotten on for fiscal year 2023, the budget cover sheet says that taxes were increased 4.57%, $1,032,000. Then you go to the next year. We already talked about this. I brought this up. Then it says for fiscal year 2024, 1.8 million. And all we hear is, well, we're lowering the rates. That's the lowest rate we've had in 20 years. Now, when you add these up and they compound, you're at $8 million of tax, property tax increases. Because you've got $1 million that's gone on for, going to be on its third year. And now you've got second year of a $1.8 million increase. Now you want another $2.5 million. For this next year, you're going to have seen $8 million in taxes, property taxes. And all y'all can say is, whoa, this is the lowest rate we've had. Mesmer, Renee, I've heard y'all say that. Y'all are up for reelection. The fact of the matter is, I think voters are going to, they're going to fill this $8 million that they've had to endure the last three years. And Mr. Mesmer, I know you, you voted on the last 16 years, you voted to increase taxes.
Mr. Lefwitch, if you could just address the commission.
I'm going, I'm addressing the commission. I'm addressing the commission. I appreciate if you wouldn't interrupt me. The fact of the matter is that you're, once again, the budget is funding one-time purchases. You're giving, you're giving taxpayers a perpetual tax to cover one-time purchases. Fire truck or paving equipment, you're going to have, you've got $8 million in outlays, but you've got $4 million, you want another $2.5 million in property taxes. We already heard from the finance director about the finance report on the interest income. Now it's an interest income of $1 million a quarter. That's something that we've never had in the city because the interest rates are 5%. They're not .5%. Sales tax numbers are up, right? We talked about the 266 days in the fund balance. When the auditor says you only need 90 days.
Time is up, Mr. Lefwitch.
Thank you, Mr. Lefwitch.
Do you want me to call on Mr. Raymond Reyes?
Mr. Reyes, is, is he outside? And so, for those that are also visiting us for the first time and learning how public comment works, as you saw, we are not able to engage, but it doesn't mean that necessarily everything that is coming from the podium is accurate or true or fact. It's just public comment and we're unable to engage in a back and forth. So, thank you. Next.
Moving on to item six, approval of minutes. Item 6A, special meeting of July 18, 2024. And 6B, special meeting of August 12, 2024.
Is there any amendments to the minutes?
I sent my amendments to the Secretary earlier today, so I'll make a motion to approve them. Both minutes, subject to those amendments.
There's a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Item seven, consent agenda. No discussion is anticipated on any of the items in this section because they are routine business or included in the budget adoption process or have been previously discussed as a staff report or discussion item. These items will be considered collectively by a single vote unless a commission member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda.
Is there anything to be removed from the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve items 7A through F?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Okay, next we have item eight, staff reports and other discussion items. Items in this section are not expected to require action by the City Commission and are generally for information only. However, any item listed in this section may become an action item with the request of the mayor or after the request of any two commission members or the city manager. Item 8A, city manager's report?
I don't have anything to report today. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item B, staff reports. We have none.
Let's go back. Why don't you tell them the good news about the downtown and the parks?
Oh, okay. At the meeting prior, we had the commission approve a selection of Freezer Nichols for the compilation of the comprehensive plan. And they added the parking study downtown, the downtown improvement district renovation project, and the parks plans. And the original quote that came back from the consultant was about $620,000. Through a series of negotiations, we were able to bring that down to about $420,000. So, they should be starting pretty soon. The comp plan's going to be on hold until we can get the release from GLO to go forward. But the parks plan, the DID renovation, and DID parking study will go ahead and proceed.
But not just DID, it's the downtown area.
Yeah, the downtown, yeah. The downtown improvement district, so.
Item 8B, staff reports. We have no reports to dispose of this. Okay, so we move on to item C, presentation of the South Texas Emergency Care Quarterly Report by Mackenzie Curl and Abel Villarreal.
Mayor and Commission and Amanda, good evening. Pleasure to be here. Glad to see you folks. I have brought with me a couple of folks. We've wanted to make this presentation to the commission for some time, actually before COVID. But the wheels fell off the wagon, as we know, during COVID. And things are finally coming back together, although I will tell you, the number of COVID patients we're seeing is going up, even this past week here in Harlingen. The presentation this evening is on a very important community project called the Community Paramedicine Program. And this is a program EMS has evolved over the years, as we can all imagine. A lot of that's because of technology that allows us to carry equipment the size of a deck of cards that can run blood tests and transmit it by Bluetooth to a doctor wherever. Even a winter Texan, we could transmit it back home to wherever their home is. But we have with us this evening, where are we? Mackenzie Curl. Mackenzie, we stole Mackenzie from UTRGV. She has a master's in public health. She's the coordinator of the Community Healthcare, Community Paramedicine Program. And Abel Villarreal is a nationally certified community health paramedic. And you've got two or three, four on your staff?
Uh, two.
Two. Actually, I thought Pete was.
Oh, yeah, Pete.
So, three or four on the staff. And it's, it just amazes me the things that we're finding in people's homes and things they're able to do for our citizens now, mostly for the elderly and the sick. So, Mackenzie?
Yes. Yes. Well, good evening, Mayor, Commission, and City Staff. Thank you for having us today. So, we're just here to provide the quarterly report on behalf of the South Texas Emergency Care Foundation. And like Mr. Austin said, we'll be focusing on the community health program. So, CHP is what we refer to it as. It's a non-emergent division of STEC EMS. And currently, we're addressing two main community issues. The first is frequent emergency department use. These are members of our community that use the emergency department three or more times in a 12-month period. We also address members and citizens in our community that use EMS at a higher frequent, at a higher rate than usual. And our benchmark for that is four or more times in a 12-month period. When we talk about these high utilizers, our benchmark for that is three or four uses within a 12-month period. But many of these members are using these emergency services as their primary healthcare. We actually had a gentleman the other day that has used the ambulance service seven times in a 24-hour period. So, we're talking about people that are misusing the resources in front of them, whether it's their fault or not. Our primary focus in this program is, of course, to address medical needs. As we are a healthcare provider, we do it in the patient's homes. But we also address non-medical drivers of health. And long story short, essentially, we do look at social needs because if our community members can't pay their light bill or their rent, they're not going to afford their medication. And the vicious cycle happens over again and they're going to go back to the emergency department. So, this is a program we've had for, it's been live for about four years now. So, it's very important to us because we are a medically underserved region, Cameron County is. And so, using our resources that we do have is crucial. So, our overall goal is to alleviate some of that stress that high utilizers can put on the EMS system, but also our local healthcare system. Superutilization can increase our ambulance wait times, our ER wait times, and it can cause hospital overcrowding. So, those are the big overarching problems that we're trying to slowly chip away at with this program. So, with our program specifically, when we look at our patients that we've enrolled and we've graduated, after we see them, our patients have had a reduction in emergency department use of 36%. So, we're very happy about that. And our graduated patients have also had a reduction in EMS use by 52%. So, that means their use before us and then after our programs. So, we look at before and after. So, we've had some great success. It's a very time-intensive program. We're in these people's homes. We're working with them one-on-one. And we're addressing dynamic needs. But we make significant impacts in their personal lives. We're not, you know, solving world issues or finding the cure to cancer, but to these people, those changes are life-changing. So, we do hope to continue expanding this program and serving more citizens across Harlingen and Cameron County. I also wanted to talk about some of the other programs that we have with STEC that kind of also fall into CHP. Of course, the program itself is our main work. But we did get a grant recently to establish a child safety seat program. We established this initiative because our medics on the street are often witness to the, you know, horrific results of children not being restrained in car seats properly, or, you know, not even having car seats. They see that day in, day out. So, we really wanted to step in and kind of make a difference. So, we have two staff members that are certified child passenger safety seat technicians. We've been doing that work. It's new. We started that this year. So far, we've inspected 25 seats. So, that's 25 kids that are safer on the road, which is a big deal for us. And 16 of those inspections actually resulted in us providing a free car seat to those families. We've established our program also as a resource for the hospitals. So, when there's a baby born at Harlingen Medical or Valley Baptist, and they don't have a car seat to go home in, they give us a call and we'll go meet them at the hospital. We'll teach the parent how to install the seat. And we'll provide that for them to take their child home safely. We've also hosted two community events. I know Chief Custer was here earlier. We worked with Harlingen Police Department back in May, and that was a great event. We had another one in San Benito in July that we had some good success with. And I want to thank Harlingen Police Department for their partnership. We have, we're expecting to do another event with them in September. So, that's been really great to kind of come together, compile our resources, and make an impact on our community where we can. So, we're very thankful for them and Sergeant Harmon, who we work closely with. And then lastly, we have reintroduced our paramedic program, which is just a fun program. It's very lighthearted. It, essentially, what we've done is we've put plush animals in our ambulances. It's not the most essential item on the ambulance, but it sure does make a difference. This program actually dates back to the 1980s for STEC. We used to do it back in the day, and we brought it back. Bonham Elementary had a bunch of kiddos that banded together and got some donations of plush toys that they donated to us. So, we give those out to our pediatric patients. It just kind of helps to alleviate some of the stress and anxiety of a 911 call. So, that's been really great as well. It's been really good for our children and our families. And actually, one of our medics came by the other day and said that they were transporting a dementia patient and that they gave the stuffed animal to the dementia patient and she held it the whole time. So, it's even helping some of our senior citizens. But yeah, that's all I have for today. Do y'all have any questions or comments?
I think that stuff's fantastic. I just saw a video, unfortunately, like on Facebook or Instagram. It was a car accident. It was a Jeep. And two kids, like the video starts when the two kids are on the road, right? Like, they're getting up, they look dazed, but it just blew my mind. I have a two-year-old and a one-year-old. And you mentioned going to the hospital. I remember trying to figure out the car seat the first time. And so, you guys are doing God's work. Thank you so, so much. And it's insane. Yeah, I was just having a conversation recently about STEC and police officers. Unfortunately, you guys come to some pretty gnarly scenes. And children survive those things. And so, the plush animals, everything you guys are doing, just keep it up. It's all fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Yeah, I just echo what Commissioner Lopez said. Y'all are doing, y'all are amazing. I think I tell, I don't know how many times I talk to Bill and I tell him all the time how great, how great y'all are. And just as a, you know, not just the mayor, but the resident of Harlingen and knowing you're there makes, you know, makes me feel confident that my elderly parents, or my, not my mom anymore, but my dad that we still have, I know that the paramedics have taken him to the emergency room. I'm just intimately involved in what, how, how our life changes once we have elderly parents and how important healthcare is and how important it is to have quality care and what you do to ensure that elderly patients are not going into the emergency room. I'm sure you know this, but people probably are not aware that you're also saving lives because they, more often than not, they're, they go in with nothing wrong with them because they just don't know. And so, to your point of not having sufficient healthcare or just maybe the right guardian, and then they get into the emergency room and then they come out, they have COVID or they have some other type of infection or disease. And then that just escalates. And really, I think that what you're doing is helping our community, especially those that are the most vulnerable. I had no idea about the plush animals. Awesome job. Congratulations. We are just so lucky here in Cameron County and Harlingen to know that we have the We are just so lucky here in Cameron County and Harlingen to know that we have the best EMS. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate your time.
Thank you all for coming, 'cause I, I get to go to their meeting once a month as the city's rep, so I get to hear about these programs far more often than you do. And I mean, you talk about a group of superheroes at STEC, we've got them, so, well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item nine, public hearings. At this time, the mayor will invite members of the public who have filled out the public hearing and the citizen communication form to address each item listed in this section. Please limit your comments to the topic of that public hearing. If more than one public hearing is being held, you will be allowed to speak during each topic, provided you have filled out the public hearing and citizen communication form for the appropriate topic. If you are signed up for two or more public hearings, you will be limited to five minutes for all topics. Mayor, we have no public hearings to disclose for this meeting.
Okay, let me just run through this really quick for the record. Item nine A, public hearing for rezoning requests from non, not designated district to residential, single-family district for 3.79 acres of land out of the Briggs-Coleman Survey 28, located along the north side of Tovar Road, approximately 3,000 feet west of FM 507. This time, we'll open the public hearing, having no one here to speak for or against, or having signed up. We will close the public hearing. Moving on to nine B, public hearing for rezoning requests from residential, single-family district to residential duplex district for a property located at 1112 West Fillmore Avenue, bearing a legal description of Lot B, Block, Block 2, Southwest Harlingen subdivision. We'll open the public hearing at this time, having no one here to speak for or against this item, and no one signed up. We will close the public hearing. Item C, public hearing amending the City Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 109, Subdivision, Article 1, Section 109-1, Definitions by amending the definition of a major subdivision and removing the definition of a minor plat, Article 2, Section 109-27, Variances by adding a provision which restricts variances to subdivisions that are subject to the model subdivision rules in Article 4, Section 109-87, General Process for a Major Plat by removing a reference to a Minor Plat and Section 109-88, Minor Plat Approval Delegation by removing this section in its entirety from the subdivision chapter of the Code of Ordinances. This time, we'll open this public hearing, having no one here to speak for or against, or having anyone to sign up. We'll close the public hearing.
Okay. Item 10, action items. City commission will discuss, consider, and take any action deemed necessary on items listed in this section, including the adoption of a resolution or an ordinance. Item 10A, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a rezoning request from not designated district to residential, single-family district for 3.79 acres of land out of the Briggs-Coleman Survey 28, located along the north side of Tovar Road, approximately 3,000 feet west of Farm Row 507, applicant Terry and Robert Cortez, planning and development.
Mark, do you wanna read that ordinance?
Sure. An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlingen, rezoning from not designated in district to residential, single-family R1 district for 3.79 acres of land out of the Briggs-Coleman Survey 28, located along the north side of Tovar Road, approximately 3,000 feet west of FM 507, applicant Terry Roberts-Cortez.
Motion approved.
Second.
Item 10B.
All those in, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You're on fire, Melinda.
I'm on fire. Item 10B, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance. Oh, sorry, sir.
Give me a second. Can we get IG to come in and get this thing going?
What's that?
His screen is not working.
Okay.
Oh, your screen's not working?
No.
Wanna swap seats?
Right.
I have them on my, my iPad, I can.
He's gonna take care of that, thank you.
Okay, and it's up there too, Commissioner. Okay, um, but yes, if we can get that working, and now we're on to B.
Consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for a rezoning request from residential, single-family district to residential duplex district for a property located at 1112 West Fillmore Avenue, bearing a legal description of Lot B, Block 2, Southwest Harlingen subdivision, applicant Greg Mar, planning and development.
Mark?
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlingen, rezoning from residential, single-family R1 district to residential duplex R2 district for a property located at 11112 West Fillmore Avenue, bearing a legal description of Lot B, Block 2, Southwest Harlingen subdivision, applicant Greg Mar.
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item C, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 109, Subdivision, Article 1, Section 109-1, Definitions by amending the definition of a major subdivision and removing the definition of a minor plat, Article 2, Section 109-27, Variances by adding a provision which restricts variances to subdivisions that are subject to the model subdivision rules, and Article 4, Section 109-87, General Process for a Major Plat by removing a reference to a Minor Plat and Section 109-88, Minor Plat Approval Delegation by removing this section in its entirety from the subdivision chapter of the Code of Ordinances, applicant City of Harlingen, planning and development.
Read the caption.
An ordinance amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 109, Subdivision, Article 1, Section 109-1, Definitions by amending the definition of a major, major subdivision and removing the definition of a minor plat, Article 2, Section 109-27, Variances by adding a provision which restricts variances to subdivisions that are subject to the model subdivision rules, and Article 4, Section 109-87, General Processes for a Major Plat by removing any reference to a Minor Plat and Section 109-88, Minor Plat Approval Delegation by removing this section in its entirety from the subdivision chapter of the Code of Ordinances, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Javier, you did a phenomenal job, uh, in the summary. I literally had to do a little legal brief on this, and I was like, I should've had Javier written it, written the background in. You did a fantastic job, keep it up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Javier.
Item D, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading amending the City of Harlingen's budget for fiscal year 2024, Finance.
Good evening, mayor, and city commissioners and staff. Uh, this is a first reading on, uh, our second and final budget amendment. Um, I have summarized the items on the executive summary. Um, all of the revenues, so, so we're amending an increase in revenue of $1,283,797. I have listed out all the detail. The most notable ones are sales tax, of course, because we've done better in, in sales tax, so we're increasing that. Uh, licenses and permits, for building permits, mechanical permits. Uh, we did have to reduce some of the franchise taxes that have not, um, materialized. We're increasing fines and forfeitures in, uh, collecting CPs, which has an offsetting expenditure. Um, traffic fines and forfeitures have gone down, uh, some interest increases, uh...
Building permits are up 150,000.
150,000, yes, sir. Expenditures have also increased by $1,297,063, so that's, uh, kind of an offset with the increased revenue. There is a detail of all of the expenditures from the general fund. Uh, some of the notable ones are the larger, uh, Dixieland Road and Lincoln Avenue, traffic signals.
The, the cost to work on the shuffleboards for the community center is in here for 266,000. Um, work on the soccer complex is in here for 285,000. And then, the only expense that will not be undertaken this fiscal year is the, uh, the grounds for the, um, the city commission authorized hiring three parks, uh, employees, but, um, the, the equipment that they need was not included in that, so we include it in this budget amendment for 163. So, that'll be something that we'll get ready to purchase to use for next budget year whenever we hire those employees.
That is great.
For the, for the Parks Department.
Excuse me, what's that on the 266 and 285? Is that gonna be on this budget, on this upcoming budget?
Yeah, it's on this budget, it's this fiscal year.
So, those are the pickleball courts at, uh, the community center?
Yes.
And then, uh, the other one was, I forgot, you said it?
Soccer complex.
Soccer complex.
Right. For the, uh...
And what is it, the soccer complex?
Uh, replacing the irrigation system.
Yeah, the sprinkler system's real bad, 'cause they're pumping out the...
Right, we're using effluent, and then all the, uh, the buildup got just, uh, too much that we couldn't clean it, so we have to replace everything.
And we're gonna use clean water, so we're not gonna have the station...
Potable water, yes. And then, the other is the, uh, the, the grounds equipment for the, uh, the ground crew for the parks that's in, in next year's budget.
So, that 163 is for next year?
Yes. Well, no, it's for the, uh, for the crew that's gonna be coming onboard next fiscal year. But we didn't include the, uh, equipment in next year's proposed budget that we're gonna talk about later, so we included it here. That's the only expenditure that, that we left out of, uh, uh, the approved expenses for next fiscal year that we had to include here to, otherwise, they're not gonna have the truck and the equipment they need to.
I don't make motion approved.
He's got it.
This is a, an ordinance, and so, it, um...
Mark?
Yeah. An ordinance amending the revenue and expenditure budget for the City of Harlingen, Texas for fiscal year October 1, 2023, through September 30, 2024, providing for publication of the caption of this ordinance and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
And there's a motion by Commissioner Lopez, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item E, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading amending Chapter 18 Master Fee Schedule of the Harlingen Code of Ordinances by establishing fees for certain licenses, permits, and other services provided by the City of Harlingen as they relate to Chapter 36, Article 5, Division 2, providing for publication and ordaining other matters pertaining to the foregoing. You call.
Do you wanna just cover what, what you're trying to do, Jeff, with the fee structure?
The conference center room is what we're trying to do, is we're trying to increase the rate from $40 an hour to $50 an hour for a resident. For a non-resident, it would go to $60 an hour, which is currently 40 and 50, so we're raising a $10 increase in the rate, too. And this is done based on what the other city structures are that ran out, that we're trying to get more in the same price range as other buildings of equal size.
Is that the only, I didn't have it in my...
Yes, that's the only thing that's...
Okay, all right, is there a motion?
Motion.
No, with the caption.
Uh, yeah, can you read the caption?
In ordinance of the City of Harlingen amending Chapter 18 Master Fee Schedule of the Harlingen Code of Ordinances by establishing fees for certain licenses, permits, and other services provided, provided by the City of Harlingen as they relate to Chapters 36, Article 5, Division 2, Tony Butler Golf Course, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, all commissioners.
I just wanna say, for all those that are running for office, I rented that space, and it was, obviously gave me good luck, so...
So, we expect at least three rentals from everybody before the election? For that space? Okay, good.
That's in your, in your district. All right, moving on.
Item F, discussion and possible action to approve an ordinance on second and final reading of the City of Harlingen, Texas ordering a special election on proposed amendments to the Home Rule City Charter of the City of Harlingen to be held on November 5, 2024, providing for the publication and posting of notice proposing amendments to the Home Rule City Charter of the City of Harlingen, City Manager.
Um, mayor, there was, um, two subsequent ordinances that were sent out by email to the mayor and commission, uh, after this was sent out in Friday's packet. Uh, those were, the changes were provided by the city attorney. Um, so, you should have that in your email. If you don't, we can get copies made for you.
We received them on Monday.
Yes, yes. Monday morning was the first, then Monday af, uh, Monday evening, late evening was the second.
So, Mark, there was some, you wanna just...
Would you like me to go one by one and just very quickly?
Um, I don't know that that's necessary. Did everybody read? Everybody read?
Okay, basically, there's, there's no change to the substance, right? Uh, we, we made just a couple changes in terms of the order of the ordinances to improve flow, um, and, and basically consistency of the language. But I, I think the, um, the, the propositions are essentially the, the same.
Just the typos and those kinds of things and, um, order?
Nothing substantive.
All right, wonderful. So, is there a motion to approve?
You, you wanna read the caption?
Yes.
Yes. I'll re, and I'll read the caption of the ordinance that's amended, not the one that's in the book, okay?
Yes.
In ordinance of the City of Harlingen, Texas ordering a special election on proposed amendments to the Home Rule City Charter of the City of Harlingen to be held on November 5, 2024, providing for the publication and posting of notice proposing amendments to the Home Rule City Charter of the City of Harlingen, providing for dates for early voting by personal appearance, providing for deadlines for application for absentee ballot, and providing an effective date.
You have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
Item G, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading amending the Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Article 3, Vehicle Towing, Modifying the Fee Schedule, and to Appeal All Ordinances in Conflict therewith, Providing for Publication and for an Effective Date, Police Department.
Mayor, commissioners, uh, this is just a update to the record ordinance, cleaning up some language. Uh, years ago, we had language in there that would allow us to hold a vehicle that, uh, didn't have insurance and require the owner to get six months' worth of insurance. We don't, no longer enforce that, and, uh, removing that out of the ordinance, updating the fees a little bit, uh, especially with the increase in tax rate, things like that, uh, nationwide, but just to make it, uh, viable, uh, and adding some additional language in here, just to make it easier.
All right, just to give...
Mayor, I, I reviewed this, and it's, uh, basically city code. I reviewed the changes to the city code, and it's fine, but it needs to be in ordinance form, 'cause it's not. So, I suggest we maybe bring it back at the next meeting and, and vote on it at, at that time.
Well, okay. It says ordinance here.
But it's not in the book.
But it's not in an ordinance.
It's city, it's not, yeah, it, but it's not, what you have in your packet is city code that's edited. It's not in ordinance form.
Right. I think, yeah, that, that's something that's...
Do we need a motion to table?
Yeah, well, we'll just bring it back at the next meeting and take it up.
Do you want a motion to table it?
Yeah, just real quick, if you don't mind, just a quick comment. Uh, chief, I know, just for the commission, for y'all to know, I had a meeting, we had a meeting, the mayor and I, about a few months ago with the tow truck owners. Uh, they brought forward to us a few of their concerns. Uh, I'm happy that we're gonna be able to table this. Thank you, Mark, for bringing this to our attention. I would just like, uh, chief, if we can share the draft with the tow truck drivers, so we can get their input. Uh, they're the ones that, you know, I don't wanna have any unnecessary friction, or they say, hey, we messed up here, and we could've just all fixed it at one time. So, if we can kinda share that. One question I did have, um, is if you look at page five, at one point, it's not that important, you don't have to look, but it's on page five. It talks about how there's now gonna be a maximum of eight tow truck drivers, or eight tow truck companies on the list. I knew, it seemed that when I went and just from, I, I imagine I didn't get every tow truck company in there, that we had more than eight, eight tow truck companies. Is there a reason?
Well, our understanding is we have eight tow truck companies basically here, but several of them bought other wreckers and use them under different names.
Okay, yeah, if you can, I remember that being a concern, right? So, there's like, one, one person, but he has, or she has, like, eight tow truck companies all under, right, under her, but all different names, so that they can all get, like, eight picks on the, what's it called?
Rotation.
Rotation, right?
Right.
Again, if we can just make sure that the tow truck company owners look at it, and if they have any changes that they wanna make to it, proposals, and then we can bring it back. And if we, it's gonna be a public hearing anyways, 'cause it's an ordinance, right? Then we can hear from them at that time, uh, so we can have that.
It, it doesn't need a public hearing to change the, uh, the, the fee structure.
No, I understand that, but if we're gonna change it from a policy to an ordinance, we're gonna have to have two hearings, correct?
It's already.
It's already, it's already in the code, so we're just, we're making, the ordinance is amending city code.
You have to have two readings, but you don't have to have a public hearing.
Okay, well, let's have a public hearing then.
It's amending the ordinance. I agree that we should have the public input. I don't know necessarily we need to have it listed as a public hearing, but I think that we should have the, when the agenda item comes up. I see a lot of y'all here and just invite y'all to come back to participate in the conversation. So even though it's not necessary, we should still have that participation. But what, a couple of things, and I'm glad you brought that up. It's something that I meant to tell the chief, but I forgot, but I forgot. Can we make sure that whatever the number is, is not going to kick anybody off that is currently servicing Harlingen? So if it's gonna be a number, then that number, and I agree that there should be a cap, since you're raising the rates, you might have more people coming into Harlingen, and we don't want to really have where it's just, you know, inundated with more companies coming into Harlingen. But the ones that came to the meeting and that are already servicing Harlingen, we wanna make sure that all of those folks are able to continue to provide the service.
Absolutely. We didn't intend to kick anybody.
Right, and that was when you, we talked, and we wanted to make sure that everybody wasn't included. And I don't know what that number is, but let's just make sure that everybody's included. The other thing I was gonna suggest, I was looking, before coming over here, I was looking at another city's rotation list, and it looked like, and it's something, and I can send it to you later, I just was looking at it before coming, they had two separate, it was City of Brownsville, and they have two different lists. And one is for, I think, like a light duty and one's for heavy duty. And so the heavy duty requires a specific equipment for you to have, because I think the goal is to make sure that if there's a wreck or there's some, you know, something going on, that we can clear the streets. And so that second list, or the heavy tow list, would make sure that everybody that's on that rotation has the proper equipment to service these big types of accidents. So maybe that's something that we could do to kind of just for efficiency. So if it's something that's a simple tow and everyone, they might be on both lists, I don't know, but maybe it's something that we can talk to Brownsville, see how they're, how it works for them. I know that, or at least I've been told that over there, it's a little different because it's like one provider per day. I don't know if you know about that, but like if they have one company, then they're on for 24 hours. I don't know if that's something that Harlingen wants to do, but surely the different list, I think, might be easier for the department to say, okay, it's this kind of accident, we go to this list, and if it's this type, you know, or if it's just a, nobody has insurance or something.
Currently, that's not an issue for us. We only have one that has heavy wreckers.
So then you're able to, you distinguish within the same rotation list. Okay.
I thought we agreed to include that particular type of tow in the, in the rate structure.
It's in there.
It's in there?
Right.
Okay.
And that's my last point, is in the rate structure, it says maximum rates for wrecker service. In there, it says the section set out in Chapter 18 Fee Schedule. Is that an attachment here? Where do I find that?
It's the last sheet on that. It's at the very end. But I did go over that with the chief. It doesn't mirror what's online, so there's some, it's not accurate.
Okay, so if we can update that, then. But yeah, perfect. If we can get it to the companies, they can look at it. Chief, I really, really wanna thank you guys for this. I know that the policy work is never the funnest work, unless you're me, right? But thank you very much for all, for you and, what's his name? I always, Morsakwakap?
Carmona.
Carmona, yeah, Carmona, for all of y'all's work. Thank you very much.
Big props to Carmona today. Everybody's thanking him.
Yeah. Just as an FYI, I was at that meeting, too, that you.
And you, too, Gabe. Thank you very much.
And one other thing, Chief, just, I didn't tell you, is just let's make sure that, and this is something maybe Mark can help, that we are not overstepping. And if the state has certain fees that we're not under, I mean, I don't think we can to say, well, you have to charge this if the state has a specific fee.
I think we went to the max, right?
Well, what I was looking at was the storage fees on, and it, so TDLR has specific storage fees that you charge per day. And so I think ours are less or something, yes, something like that, let's see. And so just to, we don't want to have our ordinance conflict with what theirs is. I think they said it, and it's not, it's like a minor difference. I think it was $20 storage per day, but they have it listed at $22.85. So I think it needs to mirror what they have there, or something just to collaborate with Mark on.
Will do.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
So there was a motion to table, and we can bring it to the next meeting?
Mark, can we just pass? Because.
We can pass your first reading and then just put it in ordinance form for the.
Yeah, because it's gonna be brought back as a, as an ordinance.
Form.
We're changing the caption, the substance of the code.
So it still needed two readings, so it just passed?
Yeah.
Okay. We had a first, but I don't have a second.
No, we passed.
Yeah. So we wanna thank all of the folks coming out. We appreciate you coming out to hear what we were gonna do, but we will be bringing it back most likely at the next meeting. And so I'm sure that the department will let y'all know so that you can come back and give your input. And definitely feel free to send any comments to Gabe, I guess, or where do you want those?
No, the chief.
To the chief, all right, yes. And then he'll make it our way. All right, thank you. All right, moving on.
Item H. Consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading amending the Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 48, Division 4, Sections 48 through 144 and 48 through 145, contingency and emergency water management plan, establishing an effective date and providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing Harlingen Water Works.
In ordinance of the city of Harlingen, Texas amending Chapter 8, Division 4, Sections 48, 144, and 48, 145 of the Harlingen City Code as amended to amend drought contingency and emergency water management plan, establishing an effective date and providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Motion to approve? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. And at this time, folks, at 6:51 PM, we're gonna take just a two-minute break, and we'll be right back.
Hopefully it's more than.
Okay, five minutes? Can someone talk to Mr.?
Yeah, I'm gonna go talk to him right now.
All right. The time is now 7:04 PM, and we are back in open session. Moving on, Melinda.
Okay, moving on to item 10I. Consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading to promote community engagement and accessibility through the requirement of an annual comprehensive town halls, district-specific town halls, and the publication of contact information for the mayor and city commissioners.
I know we'll probably have some discussion, but can you read the caption?
An ordinance to promote community engagement and accessibility through the requirement of annual comprehensive town halls, district-specific town halls, and the publication of contact information for the mayor and city commissioners.
So on this ordinance, I got with Mark, because over the course of the charter review committee meetings, there was lots of, lots of requests for community engagement and town halls and just being more involved with the community. And I know that they had mentioned wanting to have this in the charter, but then legal, kind of, and I think it was maybe city management, too, said this is more for policy, more to be in terms of an ordinance instead of in the charter. And so to kinda honor those requests, I put, I put this together with Mark, but I am open to any kind of discussion or questions or trying to improve it. If, I'll open it now if anyone has any questions.
I said, let's go forward and let's go and improve it. I think this is a great thing. This is gonna hold us accountable to the residents of our district, and I'm always in favor when we get to talk to the people one-on-one, so I think this is awesome. I think it's great.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm in favor of it as well. There's just a couple, as it is with me, just. You know, there's.
I'm sorry, bro.
Implementation questions I had. As it's written right now, it's gonna be passed immediately. I would ask that it go into effect, that its calendar be based on a fiscal year, and that what we would do, the way we would do it is, when we do, let's say, our first meeting in October, we would set the dates then for the town halls for the whole year. Because right now, it has like 30 days. I think it's better if we just have it, set it up at the beginning. Looking at 1.01, I think for you guys to consider maybe a little tighter language, because I read it, and I was like, isn't that what we do at city commission meetings anyways, at 1.01? I don't, I know that when the mayor first introduced this idea, she called them listening sessions, and I really liked that, and maybe we tweak 1.01 to be more geared towards that. And then if you look at 4.02, that's when it talks about interpreters. I remember when we did our waterworks meeting there at the convention center, I had a constituent that, you know, didn't really understand, they would like an interpreter there, and it says, upon request. My question is, when does the request have to be made by? Are we gonna always keep an interpreter on hand? Does interpreter, does this commission want an interpreter that's like certified, or does anyone who knows Spanish? Like, my Spanish is terrible, so I could not be the interpreter at all. But what does that mean to people? What does that mean to you guys, and how do you guys wanna implement it? Then the next one, 5.01, just in the spirit of cutting out red tape, it says, following each town hall meeting, the city commission shall direct city staff to compile. I'm just saying, city staff should just do it. We shouldn't, there shouldn't be any action on us to ask city staff to do it. They should just do it anyways. 5.02, if you guys have a chance to read that sentence, it says, the city commission shall ensure that resident feedback is incorporated into decision-making processes, and this is where I have my question, and communicated transparently to the public. I don't know what that means. I don't know what the intent there is. That, I don't know.
That might go back to open spaces, or public spaces, what they were talking about is putting more of our information on the web, Facebook.
I can send, Mark, I can send you my notes. I redlined it, just my questions. That's where I'm coming from. But I think the spirit of this, the intent of this is fantastic.
I think I can address some of the, just so that way we can kind of clean it up a little bit. The fiscal year, I think that's a good idea after your, I think, and talking about the ability to even complete it by the end of this year, right, and things of that nature. And so that works well. I don't know that we'll be ready to designate those dates on October, so maybe not have that on here, but that can be the goal. We can strive to do that. But I do think that the fiscal year works, works well. The town hall, I think, when, during those meetings, and again, I think I attended two, so I'm not sure if there was continuous discussion, but it was town halls. We want town halls. And I think most people think of town halls as an elected official holding a town hall where they're speaking, and then folks can come in and engage and ask questions. So I think it's, it's clear, but if we want to kind of define what a town hall is, I think we can do that, or think of another, another term. My concern of just doing only listening sessions is, then I know that this commission, right, will, will ensure that it is a town hall where you're giving updates to the community, because everybody has done that in their districts and done it wonderfully. But in the future, a listening session, you know, could mean, I'm just gonna sit here and listen to you the entire time. And so I wanna make sure that there's active engagement with the commission moving on in the future, right? And so everything, I think that what's, what I put here is something that this commission is already doing, but we would like for this to live on when, when we all move on to different times, right, and our kids are grown, and maybe they sit on the, on the commission, who knows? Moose would do really well as.
Yeah, yeah, he'd do well.
Yes, yeah. So, so any, so that's, that's the idea behind that. So however you wanna clean that up to give a definition, or if you wanna change the name, but just so long.
Everybody understands town hall and just leave it alone.
Okay, okay. So there's that, and sorry, let me just give me one more. I think that, that's okay. I think that you're right, and we can strike the city commission and just say that following each town hall, the city staff will, will put that summary together, because it's just a summary. It's not any, any direction from us. And then the interpreter, I don't know, but I would encourage maybe city staff to give us some suggestions on how we can get that done and what's the best way. I know that I was, think I was, I was telling you that in Hidalgo County, the bailiff just does the, in Cameron County, they've got it down, right? There, you know, you just have to wait sometimes. But in Hidalgo, it's, you know, the bailiff just sits, stands next to the defendant and says, you know, and does the interpretation. And so, I don't know, Delua wants to serve as our, do the interpreting, interpretation. But the lady from Harlingen Water Works, whoever that was, that was Flo, wasn't it?
Yes.
Right? She did amazing. Maybe we can have her come in, by per request. I don't know.
We can put a notice as one of the suggestions, on the actual town hall that we put out there. Let's put it in Spanish, saying that if you need interpretation, call this number.
I love that idea. That sounds, that sounds good. So that way, we are put on notice that we're gonna need an interpreter, just kind of like when I go to court, they say, well, do you need an interpreter for this hearing, yes or no? Yes, okay, then they schedule it. And if not, then at least we've provided it in the notice. That's an excellent idea. And then to 5.02, the city commission shall ensure that resident feedback is incorporated into the decision-making process and communicated transparently to the public. When I wrote this, I was thinking that, I think it would, is important that when we are making any type of changes and introducing an ordinance or a policy, that we say, this came from, you know, from our town hall meeting. And just, we've already done that, again. It's something that I think Ford did when you, we did our very first town hall meeting, you said, well, we learned that there was speeding, and there were some issues, and so we are putting this on the agenda because of this, so that people know that you are listening and you're acting on those requests. So that was really the purpose of that.
And if I may say, you wanna start this in October to start of the fiscal year. Three of us are up in November, so it would be unfair for any of us to have a town hall prior to an election.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, just removing politics from the equation, and it would be better than October, November, December, January, you three hold your town hall. So it's not close to election, so it doesn't look like the city is supporting certain candidates. Just.
Well.
Does that make sense?
I don't know that I agree with, with that, because I don't want to say that on an election year, we don't want the, because, you know, the three of us will be in 2025, and I would.
Right, 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 which is later this year then, or like in January, February, way before any election, so that nobody uses this as a city-certified election campaign event.
So you think we should just do a calendar year, starting in January, and then?
Now, we could do it fiscal year, but the three of us running in November, we should not have our town hall meeting till after the election.
Yeah, yeah, you decide the date. You guys decide whatever date you want.
Exactly. So I think that that's exactly it, and because there'll be one year where no one's running, and then every other, every other year, someone will be running. So what Daniel is proposing, we have our first meeting in October, and then your election is November 5, right? November 5. So really, there's not enough time, because based on what we have stated here, is that you need to give at least 30-day notice. So technically, we have our first meeting in October. You can't necessarily have your town hall until after the election anyway. So I think it, if changing it to what you have proposed ensures that that doesn't happen.
Yeah, I just don't want any politics in this.
I just don't think we should have anything in December.
Well, that's my.
No one's gonna clump.
That's my point. I don't think that that's gonna happen, because you've got November, you have Thanksgiving, and I just don't wanna micro-manage and say, okay, well, commission, District 1 has to have it on this, this month, District 2. I think, you know, we all are professionals and have families and jobs and all that stuff, and you should be able to kind of figure it out when it's best for each of you to hold it. And then the town hall, obviously, city staff does a great job in pulling everybody to see that we can get it done collectively. But that should kind of ease those concerns, since it won't, there's not, there's no possibility, because we have our first meeting October, whatever it is, something, October 3, 4, 5, or whatever that date falls on.
That works.
Okay. Any other suggestions for Mark for the second reading? Nope. All right. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Just so you know, Ford, out of all the attorneys, I'm actually the, like, the easiest going on, like, cleaning up language. Ford being like, you know, things are simpler, whatever.
I'm not even listening.
Are you saying out of all the attorneys, like me?
Most attorneys, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, okay.
But I'm always, shorter, sweet is better, but here, for some reason, I always go longer.
Right, that is true. It's less is, less is more. Okay. He did, he read the caption initially, and so it's passed.
Okay. Item J. Consideration and possible action to approve the preliminary construction plans and final plat with conditions of the proposed Stonebrier Estates, Phase 2 subdivision bearing a legal description of 2.71. bearing a legal description of two point seventy-one acres of land out of survey two ninety-nine, located south of Stonebrier Estates Phase One, approximately six hundred and fifty point eighty-two feet south of Wilson Road. Applicant more land surveying, uh, planning and development.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
I have a question. Uh, on some of these others that you, that you have, something was brought up to my attention, I think it was Monday or Tuesday. It referencing the fifty-year storm. Can you provide me with a map of, of FEMA map and make sure that's legit?
So there's a, there's a drainage report that is prepared for each subdivision. So in this drainage report, the subdivision engineer has to show how, how he is providing, um, storm drainage for a fifty-year storm. There's different ways to do this, right? Uh, so there's, there's a, uh, an engineering report that it gets to submitted to the city engineer for review and approval. So there, these subdivisions that are on, on your packet now, they're, they're in your packet for approval because that, that report has been approved by engineering.
I do realize that. The question was brought up a couple of days ago, all right? Is there, is it legit? Is there a legitimate fifty-year storm that's being measured? If that's the case, no problem. If there isn't, that's why I'm asking for a FEMA back, uh, map.
The commissioner, just to clarify, the FEMA map will not show you whether it's a fifty-year storm. It's just gonna show you whether the area is prone to flooding. And then it's up to the engineer, both the engineer of record, uh, and in this case Dustin, and then our engineer to get together to agree on how to properly drain it. But that's not in the FEMA map, so that's not gonna show you that.
He's right there, um, Dustin, I, I end.
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. So when we mess with the subdivisions and drainage, there's really two parts. One of it is how much rain's falling, running off, going to the ditches. That's what we size our storm sewers and detention off of. And that's based off of charts, graphs, tables that are published by NOAA. And so that's where you hear the storm sewers designed for the twenty-five. The detention is the fifty-year versus the predeveloped ten. That's where that is. So that's all calculations based off of NOAA published data. Then the second part is we set the finished floor of the house based off of hundred-year storm data. So that, that data is published by FEMA. What is, so FEMA is basically gonna say, this is your hundred-year storm. Everything else is, and that'll be, you know, zone A, A, H, AO. And that is something that is within the hundred-year storm. And if you have a mortgage in there, your mortgage company's gonna require, you know, flood insurance on it. Everything outside of that, you have zone X shaded, which is you're outside the hundred, but you're within the five hundred. So that's about the second best option. And then you'll have zone X, which is you should be good theoretically. That being said, Richmond Hills on Wilson Road. On FEMA's maps, it's zone X, it shouldn't flood. But everyone knows Richmond Hills floods, has for twenty years. So what FEMA did to kind of counteract that, they have a second website called, uh, Base Level Engineering, which is base, it's called the FEMA Base Level Engineering. And it's another viewer which is a little more ground truth accurate as far as this area truly floods, even though it's not in a flood zone. And the city did adopt that. I think they amended their flood plan development ordinance so that we base it off of that if that's more strict than the published firms. So that is published. It's a website, you can go zoom into your area and you can see exactly what it is. So, and then in addition to that, this area especially, Drainage District Five has models that have maps that are produced that are probably to an even more detailed level than that, that we can look at. And we have, you know, high water marks that we surveyed in during the 2019 flood. So we have four to five probably different areas we can go look. And that's to see, okay, our storm sewers are designed to carry the twenty-five year. Our ditches are designed to carry a fifty-year, but we set our houses so that they're safe in a hundred-year and above. So if 2019 happens again, there may be some ro, water in your road, but your house should be safe. And so that's kind of, we use multiple sources to find that. Some are published like the firms, but we know that they're not fully accurate. Then we go to the other things that are published online that you can, you can look those up on.
Thank you.
Okay, so there was a, um, a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Item K, consideration and possible action to approve the preliminary construction plans and final plat with conditions of the proposed Stonebrier Estates Phase Three subdivision and consideration of a reduction to the required park fees due to park amenities being provided in the development bearing a legal description of twenty-seven point forty-four acres of land out of survey two ninety-nine, located south of Stonebrier Estates Phase One, approximately six hundred and eighty-nine point seventy-eight feet south of Wilson Road. Applicant more land surveying LLC, planning and development.
Make a motion to approve.
Do we do the reading?
Second.
With a discount?
Because they're gonna provide those amenities.
I wanted to ask about that, the discount, so they're gonna do their own little park and stuff?
Yes, they're proposing a private park in the southeast portion of the subdivision. There's a site plan of what they're proposing to do. Playground equipment, dog park, a picnic area is gonna be really nice.
Nice, okay.
Over a hundred thousand dollar investment.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Item L, consideration and possible action to approve the preliminary construction plans and final plat with a proposed Ramos acre subdivision bearing a legal description of zero point eight six three gross acre tract of land, more or less consisting of all of the west one hundred and ten point zero feet of block one, M Garza subdivision, be, being a one point two seven acre tract of land out of block thirty-two, Palmedlo subdivision, located along the north side of South SH one oh seven, approximately two hundred and eighty feet east of Palmedlo Road. Applicant Salinas Engineering Associates, um, planning and development.
One question. Gotta ask. Why is it unrecorded?
It's, it's a tract of land that got split up many, many years ago. So there's a house in the property, it's in the county. So the county issued a permit for the house, but the house is on a water well. So they're trying to connect to the, to a water line that belongs to North Alamo Water Supply Corporation. And that's why they're going, the, the corporation is requiring the subdivision plat so that they can connect to the water.
Is there a motion?
And we're gonna get four hundred and fifty dollars in park fees.
Yeah, make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Can we take up M and N together, please?
Sure.
Item M, consideration and possible action to authorize the city manager to award a construction contract with Science Utility Contractors for the Storm Sewer Improvements Systems two oh four and two fifty-two, Sun Chase Drive, Sable Palm Street and Laser Palm Drive, designed by Sains Inc. under RFQ twenty twenty-one dash fourteen for the City of Harlingen American Rescue Plan Act, engineering. And then item N, consideration and possible action to authorize the city manager to order a construction contract with Science Utility Contractors for the Storm Sewer Improvement System one twenty-two, Jacaranda Drive, designed by Guzman and Muñoz Engineering and Surveying Inc. under RFQ twenty twenty-one dash fourteen for the City of Harlingen American Rescue Plan Act, Engineering Department.
Thank you, uh, Luis Vargas, city engineer, for the record. So these are, are two drainage projects for three different areas. Um, I'll start with the, uh, Lacey Palm subdivision and Sun Country subdivision. Um, we're replacing approximately one thousand liter feet of stormwater pipes. Uh, we'll also replace the stormwater inlets for that project. Uh, as I said, there's two areas, two subdivisions for that one. Uh, we are recommending the award for Science Utility Contractors. Uh, they're the second lowest bidder. Um, we have good references, uh, from them. We have the opposite from the first, from, from the lowest bidder. Uh, so that's the reason we're going with the second lowest bidder.
What were the recommendations on Sains? Are they, have they done this type of project before?
Yes.
Are they usually on time? Uh, they're not gonna be changing orders, things like that?
We reached out to, uh, the entities where, uh, they had performed, you know, their services, their projects. And, uh, we, we received good references. Uh, we also have, uh, staff that, that has good references from them. Don't believe there was change orders in the projects that they, uh, submitted as, as, in the references. Uh, and so we, we believe that they're, they'll, um, do a good job for us.
Looking at the map, uh, on, it's, on the bottom of it, it's A as in Apple eighty-four. It looks like, if you look at the top part, it says fifteen, of the, the yellow line, it says fifteen, twenty-four, thirty-six, eighteen, and all that. Looks like they're gonna be going through people's yards. Uh, is that accurate or am I misunderstanding?
So this map was a conceptual design from the two thousand and eight Drainage Master Plan. Um, it doesn't reflect, uh, the locate, the exact locations of where the underground pipes will be. Uh, there will be one easement that we actually acquired on the west side, um, and, and we, uh, I guess, you know, in any instance that we're gonna go through an easement between properties, we make sure that, uh, the residents know about that. But as I say, um, there's a design plan for this. It, it resembles the location map from two thousand and eight, but it's not exactly the same. Uh, we're not gonna go through people's yards, in other words. And then, of course, no, not in private property. There's an easement, we'll make sure that we have permission to be in that easement.
Perfect. And how long will this project take, more or less?
Um, approximately four months. Um, yeah, I mean, we'll do it in phases, right? Um, and we, you know, if we have street closures, we'll let, uh, the residents know. Uh, we typically like to have a week of anticipation for the notices, for the flyers that we put on the, uh, resident stores. Uh, and so, uh, yeah, the, these are timed, you know, accurately, right? Uh, we don't wanna be in construction for a long time.
Right. Could you send me that map whenever you have a chance?
Yeah, sure, definitely.
Thank you.
There was a big, um, difference in the, in the, in the, in the amounts from the Jimmy Klosner and Sons and on both of them. And so that was just my only concern, and I think you touched on it about change orders and things like that. Like, these are accurate numbers?
Y- yes. Um, so there's a difference of sixteen thousand between the second lowest bidder and the lowest bidder, right?
Right.
There's a larger difference between the fourth, uh, bidder, which is Jimmy Klosner. Uh, they're typically more expensive.
Okay.
And, and. Yeah, I think we also have a bid from them on the other project that, um, again, they're the highest bid.
Which was, yeah, that, that was my concern. I mean, they were almost double, um, on the other, on the other. And so I just wanted to make sure that, um, we aren't going to be reaching towards that figure with the lower, the lower bid. Does that make any sense? Like, any kind of, like, if, if, given that you said, I don't know what the concerns were with the G and G contractors, but they're kind of close in, in, in their numbers. And so I didn't, I don't know if there was an issue with them in terms of that wasn't really the, the cost of the project and that's why those organizations didn't fare well.
So we, we had an insurance estimate, um, and it's six hundred and fifty-three thousand. So it's closer to.
Okay.
The three lowest bidders, right?
Okay.
So we're, you know, in that range of six hundred to seven hundred thousand, right?
Okay.
Uh, that was our estimate. Um, and so, yeah, I think one million is, is a little high. Uh, and of course, as with any project, we're not looking to do any change orders. So try to put everything in the design to avoid that.
I just wanna clarify. You said the, the lowest bidder, you've, you had some bad references, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
When do you, on a, when do you anticipate the start, uh, projects, A zero two four?
We, um, once we get an award, um, or an approval from commission, we, we send the award, uh, letter, uh, within a week. Uh, we can issue a notice to proceed. Contractor has some days to prepare to order materials and all of that.
They also have to get us the bid bonds too.
Correct, yes.
And that takes a while, it takes about two weeks for that.
Yeah. So we have to have a, an executed contract before to, yeah, at the most, um, a month.
Okay, so like October, November, they'll be starting on this project. Make a motion to approve two M, or M and N. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Thanks, Luis.
Item O, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution adopting the Harlingen Downtown Improvement District Fund Budget Fiscal Year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, Finance Department.
Good evening, mayor and city commissioners. This item is for the downtown, it's a resolution, um, adopting the Harlingen Downtown Improvement District budget for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five fiscal year. Um, the district board did meet on Tuesday, August sixth, twenty twenty-four, to review and recommend approval of, uh, this, uh, budget. The revenues are projected at three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, uh, ten dollars, and the expenditures are projected at four hundred twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight. There is a detailed schedule of the breakdown of the revenues and the expenditures.
This was the same budget that we put in their packets.
Yes, sir.
And it didn't change.
Right, correct.
Is this special assessment, that's the, the tax they pay?
Yes.
And so that's what it is annually for the, those businesses, forty thousand?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? I just wanna, before we move on, I wanna welcome our new mama, um, back. We are so happy that you're here, and we hope that you enjoyed your time. Your baby is beautiful and you were missed greatly. So thank you for being here with us. Moving on.
Item P, consideration and possible action to propose a desired tax rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, Finance Department.
So this is, uh, to set the desired, uh, property tax rate for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Uh, we, I did prepare a comparison. So this slide right here, so, um, we had prepared our calculation as of, uh, for, for the year. And then on Friday, the county calls us and said they had, um, a, a change. So then we had to rework the numbers to, to reflect that change in our budget.
This was Friday of last week when we were called, uh, by the county after we had already set the rate on what is being shown here on this particular slide. Third column from the right.
Right, so, so it was, um, point five two zero nine three five was the voter approval rate. It, it didn't affect the, uh, non-revenue rate, but it did affect the, uh, voter approval rate. So, uh, from this slide, we redid our calculation. And so it ended up being, uh, our voter approval rate is point five two seven five two four, which is the, the rate that we are recommending, uh, to go with, uh, as it is reflected in the budget. Um, we, we have a historical tax rate analysis that's.
So just to.
Can you go back?
Oh, sure.
Just to, uh, mention real quick, it did go up slightly, which ended up in about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars in additional revenue from.
About three thirty.
Yeah.
And just so you guys know, when Gabe told me that, I tried to call dibs on that money.
I knew it.
But he defended y'all's honor when you guys weren't even in the room and said I couldn't do it, so.
No, I said, that's, that way it's done, commissioner. We have to have a meeting with the commission to actually decide that, so.
Yeah, and then when I heard about the additional money, I said, who's gonna be asking for that money?
Oh, I'm always.
Yeah, already done that.
Can we go to the two thousand four through this year?
Sure.
Yeah. So, um, I'm gonna point out the tragedy of this to some people. Uh, this is the lowest tax rate in twenty-three years. And we just finished a whole bunch of approvals for houses and new plots of land for houses. And some people in the city viewed that as, as a tragedy because that's gonna bring in more property taxes so that next year, when this comes up again, we could further reduce the tax rate.
Right.
And we haven't increased taxes. It's, there's more properties to be taxed, such as walk-ons, restaurant, which I cut a ribbon last week. They're gonna generate property taxes too. I know some people view it as a tragedy, but we think it's a great thing.
Yes. It's cool.
And to, just to, uh, uh. And to, just to recertify what you just said, this is the lowest tax rate since 2004 that we've had.
Do we have any records, like, before then?
So, I was gonna say, maybe it's ever, because I don't know what it was in 2003. Do we know?
I could go back and research and
I think this is just what we have seen in the last twenty-four.
Would you send that information to the entire commission?
Sure.
When you get that.
Yeah, give us like five years beyond that.
Okay.
Right.
Excuse me, Robert, could you also add to that information, the tax levy that we received on all properties for that particular year? Because this coming year, like Robert said, it's gonna be at two, two million, five hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine. That's an increase of ten point one percent over last year. So, even though we reduced it, the tax rate, we're still getting more.
Right, because you have, you have new construction that comes into, into the city.
I understand.
Right.
Okay. But at the end of the day, some of our, if I'm mistaken, Leinberger ended up with forty-some-odd properties that they sold out, okay? So, we're having some people that are losing their homes.
Right.
So, we need to be a little cognizant of what we're doing.
Right. So, just keep in mind, as we went through the budget process, we did increase police salaries, fire salaries, and other stuff.
Yes, I understand that.
Also, Commissioner, just to point out, the homes that were sold by Leinberger were all vacant. None of them were occupied by anybody. So, nobody was kicked out of the house when they sold those properties.
And how many people are on the verge of, because they've had plenty of letters and requests to pay because they cannot afford your tax rate?
I don't have that information.
You don't have that information?
The thing is, I'm sorry, go ahead, now.
I'll just say that, you know, we wanna make sure that we're not putting out there any misinformation and that we're clear. Our collections for taxes is remarkably high. I think it's like ninety-eight percent.
Ninety-eight percent.
Ninety-eight percent is, and so, those two, that's, there is a two percent, but like Gabe mentioned, that, those homes that were sold were vacant. And I know that Leinberger gives ample opportunity to make payment arrangements, to really, I mean, if the homeowner is willing to make any type of payment, they work with them. And so, I think that's, that's, that's what's, what's great about having them as a partner in this, right, to make sure that folks can stay in their homes. But, more importantly, you know, when we talk about figures and new construction, and how much the tax levy is going up, and people get confused. But the law says that the city, all cities across the state can only have an additional three point five percent per year from the previous, and that's it. So, when we start saying ten percent and all these other numbers, that's just inaccurate, because it's impossible. The way that the legislature has municipalities publish this information is confusing enough. And so, we need to do our part to ensure that we're not adding to that confusion. So, there is no amount higher than what is required, that is allowable by law. And when you think about this three point five percent, and you think about cost of living, right, COLIS that go to the employees, the monies that we have provided in the collective bargaining to, to support our first responders, all of the additional, you know, crew that we've got, being able to bring on additional parks. If you keep, if you keep the rate the same, which is what maybe, you know, some folks might want, I'm a taxpayer, too. I live here, you live here, you live here, we all, we all pay taxes. If you keep, if you keep it the same, then you can't have anything else. So, it's, if we're gonna continue to be able to, to provide these additional incentives to retain police officers, to make sure that they have the equipment that they need, to retain our employees, to have the best equipment, so that way, they don't get hurt, those things are important. And in order for us to provide additional services to our community, we also have to. So, cities are not immune to inflation. So, the things that we have to, I mean, we've seen here that the things that, you know, what costs one price today may be, you know, more tomorrow, and further down the line. So, we have to be aware of what is required. And I think that adopting the voter approval rate, that is what is intended. When, when the legislature capped it at three point five percent, it was with the understanding that most municipalities are going to be collecting three point five percent in addition, so that way, they can keep up with the additional expenses that are incurred by a city, just like an individual would have. You know, it costs more to go to the grocery store and to buy groceries. It costs more to buy the things that are needed for the, for the city staff and to provide those services.
I don't know, do any of you up here know the rule of seventy-two?
The what?
The rule of seventy-two. We just increased our insurance premium five percent. If we keep increasing our insurance premium at five percent, in fourteen years, the insurance premium, the cost to the city, has doubled in fourteen years. The rule of seventy-two, take any number into seventy-two, and you get the years it takes to double. So that, you speak of inflation. Inflation isn't the cost of anything going up, it's the loss of your purchasing power with your dollar. And so, we think things get more expensive, but our money is worth less and less and less because of the federal government borrowing three and a half trillion dollars a year this year. It makes us all poorer.
Just, you know, something to point out. I really liked how you did it, I think it was like a year or two ago. You kinda showed us a comparison, right? It's, when you look at it in a vacuum, the point five-two, it looks daunting, right? And so, I just, getting you pulled the other cities last time. And so, I went, I Googled it, and it came up Cameron County's website. It's through Tony Zegira, and you're looking at City of Brownsville for 2024, the voter approved tax, point six-zero, which is what, eight cents, about eight cents more than ours?
Sorry, City of Brownsville.
Yeah, sorry. Combs, point six-three, that's eleven cents more. Harlingen, point five-two, that's what it has here. La Feria doesn't have theirs for 2024, but last year, point eight-five. Look at Los Fresnos, one point oh-eight, right? Los Indios, point five-zero. So, that's the first town we've seen that's lower than ours. Palm Valley, you just keep going. That one's lower, but Port Isabel's, point eight-four, right? So, again, in a vacuum, it looks, it looks wild, right? But, when we start doing the comparison, and then for all the benefits that we give, like, I forget, I was surprised that other cities, we give, we pick up trash twice a week, and other cities only pick it up once. Those little things, like, they start adding up.
I was pointing that out before.
Oh, yeah. Oscar was the point of that, right? But, it's, it's those benefits, which is what the mayor and Commissioner Mesmer, and I think we've all have hit on before. I get it. Our constituents are concerned, right? But, at the end of the day, you're like, okay, well, just look at other towns. If you wanna go live in whatever town.
That's not what we're saying.
We're not saying that, but this is what you would pay there for your house, so.
Absolutely.
I understand. You gotta, you gotta explain to your constituents. You gotta be honest and fair and direct with them. I think that's the way you do it, and you show them the comparison.
Anyway, you could, Frank, this is a good thing. We've consistently, well, we, like, I can say myself, but all of us, as a majority, we've consistently lowered the tax rate. And they showed you the numbers right there. This is saving people money. I know you're concerned about the people that are struggling, but what we can control, we've been doing a good job in it. We've been cutting the tax rate, and people are paying less every year to the City of Harlingen. So, I, I would not listen to all these other people who have a, some type of, you know, ulterior motive for spreading all these rumors and these lies about tax increases, but the numbers don't lie. And you see them right in front of you.
Yeah. These are the numbers I'm gonna, I'm gonna read to you, the ones that are in the packet. Not what I just received, or what I sat down, okay? What's in the packet? Average homestead taxable, increase fourteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-three, or twelve point four percent. Average tax on average homestead, increase fifty-six dollars or eight point six percent. Total tax levy on all properties, increase two point five million and change, or ten point one percent. That's what I'm reading. That's what I'm
But that's not us doing that. That's not us doing that. That's the county, Cameron County Appraisal District, who every three years can go through and bump up your value of your house.
And that's because we're gonna do what? We're gonna use a We're going to use a tax rate, a point five-two-seven-five, or whatever was, came in at the last minute. That's what I'm basing this on, Mike.
So, so
But, at the end of the day, it's very clear, okay? We're gonna have a vote, and we'll just proceed.
Okay, well, I think that the issue, though, is that I think it's important for us that sit on this commission to understand the responsibility that we have. And the responsibility is to provide accurate information, and I can't stress that enough. We cannot, we, when those numbers are read in that fashion, it misleads people. I've just said that, what is the cap? Three point five percent.
Three point five percent.
It cannot be more than three point five percent. It's just not possible. It's not legal. It's never going to happen. And so, reading it the way that you do is just going to confuse people. And I will just kind of put this out there. If, you know, if, if we were to reduce the tax rate, right, to whatever it is that you would propose, or anyone else would propose, then we would be at three point five percent of that tax rate. And if something were to occur that we needed to increase, then we would be stuck with that rate. I was looking at another, another community, Laguna Vista, that, and they are having to go over the voter approval rate, and folks are not happy about that. They've got other rules that apply to them. However, theirs is at like forty-something cents, which is really, really low. And they're saying, how are we going to be able to generate enough revenue to even run the city? So, now, they're having to increase it because they have had it, they have it so low, because they can't keep up. When we start to reduce it to an amount that we are not able to provide the services that we need, then we're stuck at that three point five percent. You want growth? You can only use that amount of money. If we start reducing it, what are we gonna do? I mean, no one wants to, where are we gonna cut? We can't defund the police. Nobody wants that. I don't think anybody wants that. And a lot of that money went to, to provide them, to provide them additional, you know, to, for their, to have competitive salaries. And also, our fire department, there's just, there's nowhere to cut. You saw, how much did you cut off the budget of the Rose request?
The initial request?
Mm-hmm.
It was about seven million.
Seven million dollars. So, we need an additional seven million dollars, and we don't have it. And so, there's lots of things that every department wants, and we are saying no to them, so that way, we can be fiscally responsible. So, this is a good thing, and we should all see that, internalize that. And that is what we should be providing to our community, because that is the truth. And that is what accurate information is, and it is our responsibility to provide that information. We say anything else outside of that amount that is permissible, then we're, we're not, we're part of the problem, instead of trying to make people understand what it is that we're doing here.
Something, Robert, that sheet that Commissioner
Is it everybody's packet?
Yeah, Frank, Frank's reading out of, is there a way that, I think we have to do this twice, if I recall correctly, right?
Yes.
Is there a way you can just, next time we do this, you have a breakdown where it's a full explanation, like a, you gotta dumb it down for me, please, right? Just arrows, and then with full explanations of it, so that it's clear as day what is going on.
Animation, if you need it.
Sure. I apologize. Kinda like the water rate hike, you know? Yeah. This is a pipe. This is a broken pipe.
Whatever, whatever.
That's what I need. That's what I need.
So, we can provide the additional information? It's just this notice has to be statutory?
Right. It's all these lawyers that
And, you know, I, I thought I had a grasp of human nature. Obviously, I don't. But, why would people complain that we're lowering the tax rate? It doesn't make any sense.
Well, we have to do a record vote, correct?
It is a record vote, yes.
I'm prepared.
All right. Is there any other discussion? If not, um
You, you need a motion in a second, and then
And then, we can do that. Okay. So, is there a motion?
Motion.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm sorry, sorry. Ford?
Aye.
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 Nay.
Yes to the tax increase.
Did I hear Commissioner say yes?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And that is what you need, right?
Yes, thank you so much.
And then, so you'll come back around next meeting.
So, our, we'll publish this notice of public hearing of the tax increase, and that will be for September 4th will be our, our public hearing.
Please also provide a chart with the breakdown, like we did last year, just how Commissioner Lopez mentioned, and with the, with the cities, so that way, we can see a comparison. And then, I think there was a request for an additional five years on the tax rate.
Yes, please, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate all your hard work.
Appreciate it.
Okay, moving on.
Item Q, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution accepting the Harlingen Water Works Systems budget for fiscal year 2024-2025, Harlingen Water Works.
Thank you, Mayor, Commission. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for the commission and the city staff for helping the water works close on the Water Development Board funding. We did receive the money, and we are doing the drawdowns to request the funding of the projects that are already started in the planning and design phase.
And that was ten million?
Ten million, yes. Minus closing costs and all that stuff. I do have an insert, this is page fifteen, I'll refer to it as page fifteen A, so. That is the last page of our line item budget detail, which includes all of the expense totals, and is basically the breakdown of the interest expense that includes the money needed to pay the Water Development Board loan for next fiscal year. Now, just a few highlights, we are looking at fiscal year twenty-five, total revenues of twenty-eight million, one hundred and ninety thousand, seven forty-six, and expenses of twenty-seven million, nine hundred and two thousand, nine eighty-nine. We have a capital outlay of twenty-nine million, nine hundred and thirty-one thousand, three oh four.
Hold up, Ron.
Yes.
Help me out here. What page are you on?
I'm reading off the executive summary.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to go through a few points. I'm not sure exactly how detailed you would like for me to be. This is my first presentation of the budget. I know it's been very detailed in the past.
No, it hasn't been very detailed in the past.
No?
No.
Debt principal retirement, one million, ninety-five thousand. So, going forward, I would just like to go to page Page number four. This is our presentation outline. So, number one, we have some additional positions we're adding. We're adding a water maintenance technician for thirty-nine thousand, five twenty. A skate administrator in the IT department for seventy-eight thousand. We have our personnel expenses. For number two, we're proposing a cost of living adjustment of three percent, for a total of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six ninety-one. Merit pay of two percent for a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one twenty-eight. We saw a health insurance increase of five percent, costing sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy. On our operating expenses, total personnel increase of six hundred and sixty-three, forty-nine. Non-personnel costs three hundred and sixty-six thousand, fifteen dollars, and our chemical increase of eighteen thousand. Under capital expenses, we have our capital improvement projects at twenty-nine million, nine thirty-one, three oh four, and our capital asset equipment coming in at three million, six ninety, nine eighty-five. Proposed ending balance of seven million, one twenty-eight, four eleven. So, on the following page, you'll see our proposed cash inflows, our revenues, total of twenty-seven million, two forty-eight, nine sixteen. This is a working capital schedule. And cash outflows of twenty-two million, five thirty-five, six eighty-nine. You'll see our debt service and capital improvement program there, along with capital assets, as referred to. You'll see the incoming money from the Water Development Board at nine, nine million, seven twenty-four, ninety-one, less expenses. We're predicting federal grant proceeds of three million, one forty-six, two ninety-two, and some and some impact fees from water and wastewater of about half a million dollars. We're showing a decrease in working capital of seventeen million seven twenty-seven, ending balance twenty-four million eight fifty-five eight oh nine, and ending balance September thirty, seven million one twenty-eight four eleven, estimating a hundred and fifteen days of working capital. As you can see, our actuals from the end of the year on that first column, we're showing, that's audited, so we're showing five hundred and ninety days of working capital presently. Now, I would like to go over our schedule of revenues, gap basis, because we did have a price increase, and everyone was aware of. We do want to recognize that price increase and see how that does for us financially, and see how we work on our capital projects before we proceed with additional price increases. Going forward, our predicted and proposed revenues for water are coming in at twelve million nine fifty-seven four eighty-two. And for wastewater, we're showing potential revenues of twelve million six forty-three seven ninety-two, total operating revenues of twenty-five million six oh one two seventy-four. We still believe we'll be realizing investment earnings, so we're predicting one point five million in investment earnings there for the year. And going down, everything pretty much remaining the same, total non-operating revenue of two point five eight nine four seventy-two, with total revenues coming in at twenty-eight million one ninety-seven forty-six. Any questions?
Are there any questions?
No, not for me.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like for me to proceed, or are there any other details you would like to-
I think, I think we're good.
I think we're good. Yes. I think you made him feel like he needed to go through all of it.
I didn't want him to go through the presentation he did at Water Works, I was like, almost forty-five minutes.
Line by line, yes.
Okay, um, thank you for that. Is there a motion?
Quick question.
Okay.
When do we start on the Little Creek Interceptor?
That is being designed right now, if I'm not mistaken, it's in the design phase. That is part of our Water Development Board projects.
Correct.
Thirty-second update, I promise. So yes, that is currently with a design consultant. Per the Water Development Board's process, we're in the planning phase for that project, and so even though the engineer is working on design, we do have to complete some aspects of the scope for planning, and so right now we're doing, they're doing the environmental study. So that's kind of where we're at right now, we're getting write-of-entries. The environmental consultant's gonna go out, they're gonna do their study. Not sure on the timeline on that, there are some people who say it could take a few, that the study itself doesn't take too long, but the Water Development Board's review and approval time can vary.
So when do you think we'll have design more or less done?
Design, I think it's in about twelve, I think from when we awarded it, about twelve months because of the scale. If you like, I can, because the engineering's contract, they have a timeline as well, they're supposed to follow. Obviously, it's, it might fluctuate with the Water Development Board timeline, but if you want, I can, I can look into the contract for you and give you the estimated time that they gave us.
Perfect, and I would like to also know a break ground date.
Oh, okay, sure.
Where we start the implementation of it. Thank you.
Awesome. Any other discussion? Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Continuing on to eleven, item eleven, board appointments. Specifically, appointment or discussion and possible action to include appointment and/or removal of any position subject to appointment or removal by statute, ordinance, or by laws.
I have none.
None.
Reappoint Madhu De La Paz to Harlingen Community Improvement Board.
None.
Um, none.
Is there a motion to approve?
Do you have any?
Oh, no, sorry.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries.
Item twelve, executive session. All items listed in this section will be deliberated in a closed session. Members of the public are not generally permitted to attend a closed session. Executive session items may be considered as an action item at the discretion of the mayor. However, City Commission will not take any action in closed session. Item twelve A pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section five five one point zero seven one, one and two, Attorney Consultation, Section five five one point zero seven two, regarding sale of property, City Manager.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries. The time is now eight oh three PM, we will retire executive session, be back shortly. All right, the, the time is now eight thirty-two PM, we are back in open session, and Ms. Melinda?
Item thirteen, action on executive session items. The City Commission will reconvene in open session and may take action on any item listed in the executive session section of this agenda. Item thirteen A, consideration and possible action on item twelve A as discussed in executive session.
Is there a motion?
Take a motion to proceed as discussed?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries, and that is it, we are adjourned, thank you.